Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Included in the packet is M V D minutes from June 22nd along with a special meeting minutes from July 7th. Item six is announcements of praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray if people would like to join me. Heavenly Father, how great Thou art, um, silent Lord. We just appreciate the chance to meet and have the freedoms that we do. Do this name we bring, amen. Um, off-road rally, uh, the September 9th through 12th, so coming very soon. I think there's a lot of registrations coming to town and just more events and activities in our community. Uh, United Way Month of Caring Project, one thing the city is asking is if you have graffiti or notice any graffiti, let us know. Um, we can get that on the project list and we can get that removed this year. So call the finance office, uh, and they'll be able to help and take that information. Um, I want to congratulate Liz, our city engineer, on her retirement. That's happening next week. Um, wish her well and thanks for the service in the city hall here. I think that's all I have for sure for notes. Anybody have anything to add?
Thanks everybody for, uh, Mustang rally, uh, events and, uh, help works.
Anything else for announcements of praise tonight? Item seven, city managers' reports. I'll turn over to you, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor, I think you left out an important thing about Liz's retirement, that she's actually not able to leave until she finds an appropriate, uh, replacement.
Right.
So that's in the official record here.
She does not want that.
Payroll changes, uh, numbers one and two, those, uh, were changes that were made during the rallies, so just need to note them in the minutes, uh, so that it can be officially documented. Uh, in the police department, we do have, uh, a part-time support staff, uh, member who will be joining us. And then at the community center, we have some new, uh, front desk attendants, uh, that will be joining us. In addition, um, Faye did receive our final check, uh, from July from sales tax. And so, uh, the numbers I'm going to give you are for sales that occurred in July as well as the majority of the temporary vendors during the rally. I know that's kind of confusing, but if you're a temporary vendor, you actually report in that in August, which is also the same time as permanent businesses report, uh, their July sales. So, uh, the 2%, which is the general, uh, sales tax month over month, we were up 22%. That means year over year, we are up 15.6%. Uh, triple B, the tourism tax, month over month, we are up 32.1%. And year over year, we are up 41.2%. So doing incredibly well and, uh, it's wonderful to see that trend continuing. That's all I have. Unless there are any questions.
Thanks, Daniel. Great news there. Item A is consent calendar. We have A through C tonight. We have minutes and then setting a couple of public hearings. Does council wish you moving in those items and discuss them individually? But anybody in the public? Minutes and setting public hearings. I refer first by Jason to approve.
Dave?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. Item nine is claims. I do have an addition here that Faye gave me. They warned about this morning. Um, in addition to the claims that are posted in the packet, we do have Garden Grove Developments, Tiff, uh, claims to add to it. It has a total of 711,250.21. So a very large claim for sure, but.
Can you see that figure one more time?
Again, that is an addition. It's not included in the packet, obviously for infrastructure, for the development. Does council have any questions on the claims?
I've, I've got one and it's on beach 10 and it's on, uh, cemetery surveying. So I'm just kind of wondering what was done there? What are you surveying and for what purpose? And somebody can elaborate on that?
Sure. That was for a new section of the cemetery that we're going to, uh, start, um, selling lots for, um, or lots. And so, um, it has to be surveyed first so that we can, uh, start sort of selling.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we, do we ask, do any historical findings on property?
No. No.
Any other discussion on the claims? Public or council?
I guess I would, um, you know, uh, approve the claims with the addition of the Garden Grove and that addition of, I should say, 711,250.21.
Go first by Dave with the addition.
Second.
And the second by Becca. Any last discussion, public or council? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone, Dave.
I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Randy, what was that figure again? I didn't have a pencil on that, uh. Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. Please know unanimously, Faye. Bills are paid. Item 10 is public hearings. Subset A is consideration for use on review appeal, uh, from Mr. Earthman, High Plains Nutrition. Mr. Smith's got the staff report for us here. Um, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, the background information on this is, uh, the, uh, Mr. Earthman has a conditional use permit that's issued for an in-home animal nutrition business to operate at his residence at 1923 Arizona Avenue. The conditional use permit was approved in 2019. Initially prompted, was initially prompted from complaints received regarding the parking of a trailer, the commercial vehicles registered to his business, High Plains Nutrition. There are no additional employees, visible product storage, or customers that visit the home. The basis of approval was allowed, provided that the trailer was removed from the property and the vehicles are parked under compliance of Title 16 for the traffic regulations. Due to a recent complaint received by the planning permitting department, the permit was scheduled for a formal, formal review by the planning commission on August 17th. After that review, the planning commission voted to recommend denying the use, the conditional use permit, uh, per Title 18, Article 7, Section 2 of the city ordinance. And then the use, uh, review shall, denial should be submitted to the city council for final consideration. Since the issuance of the conditional use permit in 2019, complaints have been received by the planning permitting office regarding the parking of commercial vehicles at the property. The applicant currently has two commercial vehicles and two personal vehicles that are parked at the property. The trailer that was prompted, the initial complaint, has been removed. However, sporadic complaints have been reported by the planning permitting office regarding the parking of vehicles on the boulevard, along Sun Street Street, or in the front yard of the property. With the repeated offenses reported to city staff, it is uncertain if conditions can be met for the conditional use permit to continue. The planning commission considered the information and voted to recommend revoking the use on review and to come into compliance without need for conditional use permit. Landowner would need, would be limited to one commercial vehicle per family living on the president's, on the premises, as laid out in our Title 18, Article 5, Section 6, where it states, "No more than one commercial vehicle per family living on the premises, which does not exceed two tons rated capacity shall be permitted." If these conditions can be met, the applicant would not be required to obtain the use on review to continue operating his business at the home. Staff recommends the city council follow the recommendation of the planning commission and revoke the conditional use permit. If the permit is revoked, the property must come into compliance with Title 18 or, the Title 18 ordinances by limiting the landowner to one commercial vehicle to be imparked at 1923 Arizona Avenue. If the permit is allowed to continue, the use of review will follow the annual review procedure as stated in Article 7, Section 2 of Title 18. Mr. Earthman is here to answer any of your questions.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Dave from council at this point in time? Mr. Earthman, come on up then. You got, you got anything you want to say, Dave, or you want?
Okay. Thank you for bringing my attention about that, uh, one, uh, uh, two, two, uh, commercial vehicles. I actually saved you about $200. I didn't really, I, but, and, and, and it's just a trade, you know? Cause, uh, those people, that money goes to keeping the highways, the DMT that understands.
So. Can you have me speak to the microphones with you here?
Anyway, thank you for those people that may have brought that to my attention. I, I guess I could make a donation if I ever make any money to those guys, but I feel that we need to save highways here in South Dakota. Uh, I've broken several tires over the years on different obstacles in our highways. So I quickly did that and, uh, I still wash my trucks on the yard because back when that house was built, they filled, filled that, uh, with big rocks. And I did some studying why it was costing me $130 just to keep that front part green on my water bills. Uh, I need to wash, uh, uh, organic math and they're sand, anything to fill up those big rocks. So anytime I go over dusty road, I just go in there and wash off my, my trucks and also fill up my water barrels for my horses that I don't want to do. Took the, I only have one commercial vehicle, signage is still on the trucks. So. And, and the questions, I guess.
Any questions from council? As Dave Smith said, that to come into compliance without anything for any special permits or anything, there just needs to be one commercial vehicle per family at the residence. So what's happened is through planning zoning, they've reevaluated the conditional use and have recommended denial. So it'll be something different than what's been going on for the last three years. So Mike looks like you're.
Is, uh, four, two of you received any complaints?
I am not myself.
I have not. So, oh, I'm sorry. So the, we, the revocation of the conditional use on review is recommended because there's only one commercial vehicle now or because of the violation that was seen and the complaints made? Do you mind clarifying that for me? Please.
So the planning and zoning commission recommended to revoke the use on review because of the complaints received and the amount of commercial vehicles that he added to property. Mr. Earthman has, um, four pickups at least, uh, that are generally at his residence at any one given time other than the one when he's out working. So there's three. He has a tendency to park them in his front yard and leave them there. Um, that's some of the complaints. There's other complaints that are based on the condition of the property that don't meet our ordinances and Title 12 as, as it sits right now. So there's not much we can do about it. I have talked to Dave in the past about a few things he's taken care of. Uh, so, but the main reason was, is that the amount of commercial vehicles where they were being parked in the complaints. Now, in, as the ordinance states, one commercial vehicle per family. And so if it's, does that mean if it's, is it commercially licensed? Or is it considered a commercial vehicle if it has your business name on it? That's something that you'll have to make that determination. You know, if he uses it for his business, it would be a commercial vehicle. If he advertises on it, it would be, and the planning zoning went through this, would consider it to be a commercial vehicle. I believe the pickup that's in that picture right now, it has regular license plates on it. I, at the time, did have, uh, High Plains Nutrition on the side. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Still does. So I can quickly take it off. It's just a magnet I bought from one of our local businesses.
Does that, does that help?
I, I don't know why people call me. I guess I'm out there a little bit too far. But I received two complaints from residents in the community as well as the same to the complaint about Mr. Earthman. Also complained about the number of vehicles parked ordering him on the east. There is, uh, at any given time, one resident said there could be seven or eight vehicles parked on that corner. So anyway, the only people that really talked to me were complaining about Mr. Earthman.
Any further discussion, public or council?
This is, this has come to planning and zoning at least three times to right now. So maybe four.
When the trailer that was discussed earlier, when was the last time that that was in violation? Or when was the last time it was parked at the rest?
I moved it the next day. And funny thing, the carpenter was using it for a sawhorse on that neighborhood of the east that was complaining about it. So I, I moved it, then I picked up, hold it up to the horses.
Thank you. Mike, you had something there. Can you go over to the microphone, please, on?
Council segment, to answer your question, I would have to look back, but it's, 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 Mr. Earthman has brought it back and forth of, from times. It's never been, it's never overstated its welcome, as I would say according to the ordinance. So that part he's been very compliant with. Um, but I said this was all prompted by, by complaint citizen complaints.
Thank you.
And I just have a quick little question. Mike said his complaints came from the same individual?
I don't know if they came from the same individual, but they, I have two complaints from that exact block. Uh, one was trying to drive around the vehicles for sight view and the other was just sick and tired of seeing how many vehicles been there.
And then my question today would be how many different individuals, uh, complaints over there?
Two.
Right.
I've had several, uh, different individuals from that neighborhood either call me or stop into my office. The actual number, we generally don't release that as part of, as part of our investigation. So, but it's been several. Yes, some of them have been the same people over and over again. And as far as the number of vehicles, unfortunately, our ordinance doesn't disallow a number of vehicles. You can have 30 vehicles parked on and around your property as long as they meet the ordinance, they're licensed, operational, insured. Um, where Mr. Earthman's all are, the neighbor that Mike's talking about, I've never received a complaint about that. So, um, I would certainly investigate that if I do.
Thanks, Dave. Any further discussion? Or is there a motion?
I've moved to deny.
So you're.
I've moved to deny the use, the original statement of use.
The conditional use on review. So I have a first by Mike to follow the recommendation of planning zoning and discontinue the conditional use review. Fair to say, Mike?
Correct.
Go first by Mike.
Second.
And the second by Dave. Any last discussion?
So I have a question. So if Mr. Earthman went down to just one commercial vehicle, then he wouldn't even need to have a use on review, correct? So there's still kind of a path forward.
That, that is, that is correct. Yes. If he, if he goes down to one commercial vehicle on his property, then he doesn't need to have a use on review because he doesn't meet any of the other criteria. The only reason it came to our light and attention in 2019 is because of the complaints, because of the vehicle parking on the boulevard. Like you see the top picture when they park on the boulevard like that? That, that shouldn't have happened. And we're trying to get him off the boulevard whenever possible. But yes.
So we got a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed, a no?
No.
That motion carries five to one. Thanks, you guys. Subset B is consideration of a variance for a.
I should have brought it with me, I'm sorry. Uh, the item before you is a request for a variance to a setback, a five-foot versus the 10-foot, so a five-foot variance, to build a home addition to the existing shop at 1035 Seventh Street. Uh, this is including the West Howard. The property is owned as media designated residential. Per the ordinance, the property is considered non-conforming as it does not have a primary residence on the structure, primary residential structure on the current lot. The property use requirements will be met with the addition of a residential structure. Concerns about the integrity of the hill along the east side of the property line by the cemetery, as well as along the railroad right of way to the south have been received and considered by staff. Stabilization of the hill to prevent future property damage to neighboring properties will need to be required at the time of building permit application. Uh, the Rapid City Pier Eastern Railroad has been notified of the request, but no further comment has been received. Uh, the right-of-way serving to property is unimproved and several houses in this block will have alley access only, so they're all non-conforming. Uh, while development of a property typically requires street improvements to be installed, the property scored low on priority on the city staff's curb and gutter evaluation due to the lack of the surrounding infrastructure. Uh, landowner notifications, there were 10 official notifications were sent to neighboring landowners within 200 feet of the property. Those notifications resulted in the following results based on assessed property values. Four were a no response or 55.83%. 44.175% or five were approved, which includes the value of property owner or the applicant. One dis, uh, there was 0% disapproval because the one has no assessed value. That's from the church. And they were the ones that were concerned about the integrity of the, of the property along the cemetery. Uh, budget impact, the development lot will increase the assessed value of the property and bring the property into compliance with current zoning regulations. Staff recommends the planning commission re, excuse me, the planning commission reviewed the request on August 17th at a special meeting and recommended to approve the request, given that the plans to stabilize the hill are included with the building permit plans. Staff recommends the council grant the approval of the variance with the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Thanks, Dave. Questions for Dave specifically?
I've got a couple.
You bet. Go ahead, Mike.
The trailer house, it's, uh, we're doing the driveway. We can see the, the, no, it's the south end of it there. Is that on the property lot?
Yeah, it, it, it's not usually there. It was brought in and set up, uh, for the rally. Um, it was kind of one of those things that when we drove up there, hey, look what's that, look what's here. And that seems to happen a lot once in a while. And, uh, so it, I don't know if it's currently existing there. I think it's gone, but it was a temporary structure. Uh, the actual, I think the property line is actually where that green fence post is in, in the picture, if you see that. Currently, the use up there, it, it was a garage, basically. Um, and the people over the years have used it for storage and they brought their camper up there and parked the camper up and stayed there during the rally home. They want to improve it and build an actual home, um, in place of the camper.
How, how's it a home?
We don't have any plans yet.
I've got an idea. I think it'd be a good idea. The original garage was built by a practicing electrician about 20 years ago and, uh, he used it as, as storage for electrical components. And, uh, I, I don't see any big issues there, but I just see an issue with the trailer. See that being bigger issues in the house.
Yeah, like I said, I, I did drive by there today. I was on vacation last week for a few days there and I did drive by, but I don't think, like I said, it just showed up and I think it was set there as a temporary, cause it's not, basically what it is is a shower house. It's actually not living space, it was a shower house. It's hooked up to power and there's a sewer, sewer clean out there. So obviously at one time or another, they brought that, the idea, because people come up there and stay during rally camp up in that property so they have a place to shower. So it wasn't separate living, I think it was just a shower house. The people that own the property have a, um, insulation business. They travel around. They were going to use this as a stopping point for their employees and they wanted to live in the garage several years ago when they contacted me, they wanted to, but it doesn't meet the, the code to be able to make a living quarters.
But this variance is just for the addition to the shop?
This would allow them to build the home attached to the shop in place of the camper that's up there.
Correct. Any further discussion from council?
I see no objections.
Public input, questions, comments, concerns, of this request for a variance?
I blew to approve the variance.
Go first by Dave.
Second.
And the second by Becca. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed, a no? That motion carries. Brings us to reports, item 11.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Dave. Subset A is consideration to approve second reading of our budget for 2022. Mr. Hensley, I will turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a, a couple of things, I think, to point out before we go over the changes that were made to the, uh, the, uh, 22 budget, uh, since the first reading of the budget. I think again is, uh, what's very important to point out is the city's financial position, that the city's financial position is far stronger, um, than it has been at any point in the last, uh, 10 to 20 years. Uh, the general fund as of the end of June, uh, 2021, is that 229% of, um, I'm sorry, uh, 229% of annual expenditures, which is fantastic. And our bond rating has increased four steps from, uh, 2008 to 2014. Again, we would anticipate that our bond rating would have gone even higher, but since then, our last, uh, bond has actually been paid off, the last bond that's rated. And so, uh, we probably won't receive another bond rating for quite some time. Um, the proposed budget does reduce the city of Sturgis mill levy, um, at 16.6%. Um, that is, uh, an approximate amount. We will not know the complete, uh, final drop for about another month until we know the final assessed valuation from the county. Um, but that's a significant reduction. That would actually bring it to just over, uh, $5.02 for every $1 in assessed value. Now, just to make sure everyone understands, that does not necessarily mean that your total tax bill will be reduced. And that's because the only thing the city council has, um, authority over is the actual city mill levy. The city mill levy represents about 33% of an owner occupied housing developer, an owner occupied homes, uh, total tax bill. So the other 60, by the 67% is controlled by other entities, not the city. And so the one thing the city is in control of, it has continued to reduce and is, uh, being reduced quite a bit further. Um, in doing this, I really do want to, uh, express my gratitude for, uh, many years of councilors making very tough choices, department heads that have increased efficiency greatly, uh, the staff which have worked incredibly hard and have made, uh, tremendous sacrifices, um, in a lot of the things they do and the community as a whole for hosting more events. The additional events are making a difference in our tourism income as well as general sales tax income, uh, welcoming growth, which has made a drastic, uh, increase in our total assessed value as well as, uh, increase in our total sales tax and then also shopping locally, uh, which if you talk to just about any business owner in Sturgis, uh, they would tell you that last year was actually a phenomenal year and this year it's beating the last year easily. Um, sales have been going fantastic and that's, uh, due to the growth of our community, local shopping locally and, um, also the increased tourism that we have. Again, looking at how property taxes have been reduced, it's important to look at what was actually 22s, uh, projected, uh, revenue. You can see that the property tax has been reduced significantly. How that's essentially paid for, um, is because of the increased profitability of the liquor store. The liquor store next year is anticipated to have a net of almost 400,000. Back in 2010, it had a net of, I think, a couple thousand. Um, the increased profitability of the annual Sturgis, uh, city of Sturgis Motorcycle Rally, uh, once again, next year, we're anticipating or budgeting a net profit. once again, next year we're anticipating or budgeting a net profitability of a million dollars. The increased revenue from interest payments on the TIP loans that we made, which is more than four hundred thousand a year. The increased sales tax revenue, which has been tremendous, as we already went over earlier this year, and increased contractor licenses and building permits. And one other thing that I should bring up is the increased revenue that we're receiving from the airport as well. We've made tremendous strides at our airport, if you look back at twenty-ten, the airport easily would cost the city sixty, eighty thousand dollars a year to operate and maintain that. This year, instead of actually costing the general fund revenue, it's probably going to return a slight amount to the city's general fund. So those are not all of the changes that have been made, but those are some of the most significant, that have really allowed this council, as well as councils in the past, to continue to reduce the property taxes. So moving on to changes from the first reading. In the general fund, there was a, an increase in the dispatch by ten thousand dollars. We did receive a revised estimate from the county, and they are anticipating the total cost next year being ten thousand dollars higher. To make up that difference, we did reduce a consulting line item by ten thousand. We always have a little bit of money that is set aside for various, whether it's survey work, or some engineering work, or something that might need to be done, so we did reduce that by ten thousand to make up that difference. In addition, in our capital improvement fund, when we heard that dispatch, the operating costs were going to be increased by ten thousand, we did hear that the anticipated upgrades at the dispatch center, the city share was going to be reduced by a hundred thousand dollars. So we actually have included a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in expenditures next year, and instead, the county said it would likely be about seventy thousand dollars. That really came from some additional work by the county staff in getting some better estimates, and then also the sheriff who went out and got some additional grant funding for that, and so that was a significant savings. And so that extra hundred thousand dollars is staying in the capital improvement fund, but will be available to hopefully make some additional improvements next year to our community. And then, in addition, there were some changes to three different TIPS, TIP eighteen, which is the senior living. Now, we are anticipating that the senior living project is going to be proceeding. That is a TIP that has already been approved by the council. There's a loan, as well as a TIP amendment, the council will be hearing at your next council meeting, but now looking at the budget, we do anticipate that there's going to be some improvements that are going to be starting to be made on that project site, and so we have increased the budget on that TIP, and it was to fund some infrastructure projects that the council has already approved in your project plan for TIP eighteen, but we're just including it now in the budget for twenty-two. I do want to bring that up, though, that if the developer is able to actually start work this year, it is possible that we're actually going to need to do a supplemental appropriation for that TIP for twenty-one, because it's possible that some of the funding from that project plan is actually going to be needed this year still, but honestly, we're not going to know for probably thirty to forty-five days. And then TIP twenty, which is Garden Grove, that project is continuing. There might be some expenses in twenty-twenty-two, we are not sure. We actually just received the, the final, or not the final, but one of the construction bills from the developer late last week, which is why that was now added to the claims. We have to review that, but with that being said, there might be some expenses in twenty-two, and so we did include some by the authority for Garden Grove. And then Hidden Hills, which is TIP twenty-one, that project is continuing, there's going to be some expenses in twenty-one and some expenses in twenty-two. Honestly, we're not able to tell you exactly how much in each individual year, and that's because those projects are outside the city's control. And so essentially, when the bills come in, that's when we have to start paying them, and so that's our best estimate. But those are the only changes from the first reading. Other than that, the vast majority of the budget remains the exact same.
How many homes are going to be built in Garden Grove and also Hidden Hills, you have an idea?
Garden Grove is fifty-seven, and then Hidden Hills is forty, is it forty-one or forty even?
About that, yeah.
Forty, forty-one, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on second reading of appropriation for twenty-twenty-two's budget?
The senior living, that is fifty units of senior living, and then also six town homes that are anticipated to be done with that project.
One unit, basically, the fifty units.
Yes, yeah, so it's a three-story, fifty-unit building, and then along Ferguson Drive, there would be three new places or six town homes that would be constructed there.
Any further discussion, public or council, on second reading? Once this is posted in the papers, goes into effect after twenty days, and we've finished on time for another year, so nice work, you guys. Kind of easy undertaking, both department heads and up above the staff there, they were putting it all together, so very efficient, very well done. Is there a motion?
I'd like a comment. Daniel, I'd like you to send your new briefing to the council. There's a lot of stuff in that briefing you just gave that we don't have, and I like yours better. Anyway, with that being said, there's quite a big difference in this year's budget compared to budget for twenty-one. The twenty-two budget is significantly higher, and I just want the council to know that, because it's a little hard for me to justify that spread. And I don't know if anybody else has looked into that like I have, but I don't sit on legal finance, so I just kind of use the figures that I can get from council reports and stuff, and I'm not sure I can justify the amount of increases that we're looking at. So I can stitch on to it.
And almost all of that increase is in infrastructure. And so when you look, I think it's about seven million dollars is infrastructure that's being funded through TIPS. And again, we can't necessarily guarantee that all that's going to be built next year. That's our best estimate, but it's possible that some of it's going to be actually done in twenty-twenty-three, and some of it might still be done this fall. And so we might be coming back to you saying, you know, we need another supplement for one of the TIPS. But that is the vast majority of the changes.
I think you might explain how, or the people that are watching this on Facebook or whatever, but you know, it's closer to eight point seven million dollar increase over the last year's budget. Explain how the TIP gets paid and why it doesn't come out of taxpayers' money.
The, the TIP is essentially a loan that is made to a developer when a new project is being done, and then that developer is guaranteeing that that loan is going to be repaid within twenty years. The first source of repayment from that comes from new tax revenue that would be coming from the new assessed value. So if you look at a parcel, if its assessed value is a hundred thousand dollars before any improvements are made, it would probably be a total tax bill of somewhere around two thousand dollars a year. And then after the developer is done, usually that, that valuation is going to be higher, and so it should be approximately one point one million dollars, as an example. And so then that would generate an additional twenty thousand dollars in new tax revenue. That twenty thousand dollars in new tax revenue then goes to repay the TIP loan until that TIP loan is paid off, and then if for some reason there's not enough tax revenue, or new tax revenue from that new development to pay that off, then the developer's on the hook to pay the remaining amount. And that is something that communities throughout the state have used, so that they can improve existing infrastructure, or they can build on new infrastructure. For example, Rapid City and Brookings, many of the new projects they have, whether they're parks, or road resurfacing projects, or sewer line expansions, quite often they are paid through TIP projects to ensure that the existing taxpayers are not paying for their new growth, and also to allow enhancements in existing infrastructure to be paid for without having the existing taxpayers paying for them.
And with that tool from the state, we've also had the capability to use our improved financial state to pay ourselves interest, which is only better for the community as a whole itself. You get the infrastructure, then you get payback, so definitely a program and a tool given to us by the state legislature that we've been using very well over the last decade.
The bottom line is, this is a good bank of the citizens of Sturgis. Period. Thank you. Who could approve?
We have a first by mine to approve, second reading.
Second.
Then the second by Dave. Any last discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we reiterate that the increase in this year's budget, the taxpayers are not paying for that. It is infrastructure, it has to do with TIPS, so I want to make sure that that is made very clear.
Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. Please note unanimously for roll call, eh? With our six people here. Subset B is consideration to approve second reading for title eighteen ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-seven for zoning for medical cannabis. And Mr. Hensley down, I believe, for this one. Current there?
That's correct, that's because this is the easy one. This is the second reading for the zoning portion is, people might recall, the medical marijuana ordinances, the city is actually enacting two separate ordinances, one in zoning, and the second one is establishing medical marijuana licensing. The first one is zoning, that has been discussed several times by the council, as well as the planning and zoning commission. There have been no changes to this recommended change in the zoning ordinance, and so there's, there's no difference compared to your first reading, and so staff would recommend that you adopt the second reading of the zoning ordinance.
Any questions on this change to title eighteen from council? Public questions, comments, concerns for the second reading? Is there a motion? They're first by Jason to approve.
Second.
And a second by Becca. Any last discussion on the zoning information? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries unanimously. Subset C, this is first reading of due to some changes of twenty, of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-six, and I have Mr. Marshall down for this one, so I'll turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of these suggested changes came about by consideration of the ability of the city of Sturgis to hold a dispensary license and operate a business or lease a business in much the same manner that the city does with its liquor store. The discussion among staff being that it might be a very valuable license, and the city could benefit greatly from holding it, especially highlighted with the number of special events that are taking place in Sturgis. To facilitate that, we have to anticipate whether the state will allow the city to hold and operate a cannabis dispensary. We do not know today whether that will come to pass, although there has been some discussion among the municipal league and other city attorneys, that legislation authorizing that will be introduced in the next session. If that comes to pass, there's tension between existing license holders in the city entering the market. So to accomplish or create the ability to accomplish the score, the four recommendations are in concert. The first is a reduction to the number of dispensary licenses from four to two. The second is a recognition, recognition that the city may hold both dispensary licenses and operate them in any manner allowed by state law. The city is, of course, limited by what it can do, by what authority the state grants to it. The next provision is to allow an application submitted by the city to a preference to those submitted by others, and to change the order in which the applications are considered. Current, the initial proposal was on a first come, first served basis, and this amendment will allow the city's application, if authorized to submit it, to be considered first. And the final portion of this is to make it abundantly clear that an applicant who has received a license, a dispensary license, does not have a protected property interest in that license. An example of what happens if you do have a protected interest is the value of those licenses skyrocketed, and the city does not reap any benefit from it because the licenses are sold, subject to council approval, and the scene of costs escalate dramatically. There is disagreement among various cities in the state about the number of appropriate licenses. I think Rapid City is suggesting that there be one dispensary license per five thousand city residents. Their Sioux Falls, on the other hand, has five dispensary licenses for the city of Sioux Falls. There are some communities which are not interested in having any dispensaries, and there's been a suggestion made and a recommendation made that they be allowed to outlaw dispensaries within the city. Whether that is adopted by the legislature is yet to be seen. So I would be happy to entertain any questions about the provisions the council may have.
I guess it's important to reiterate the fact that it's required that before the end of October, that we have to have something in place.
That is correct. And in addition to that, there are recommendations in the works that that application must be approved or rejected within ninety days of its submission.
Any questions from council for Mr. Marshall?
So in this ordinance, we're doing to authorize two licenses, and at this point they could still be held by the city. I don't pick up any designation or, or then sell them or anything else.
You're correct, Mike, but currently, the way things are written, we don't have the authority to own, operate, or lease those. The, the new language allows for, if and when the state legislature chooses to put into effect that the cities can do that, then we have that capability. We have to put our ordinance in place prior to the legislature meeting and go into session and deciding what they decide, so.
Mr. Marshall, do you, do you see this following the way of hard liquor licenses by capital? Do you have any clue what the state's going to do?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Pashan. I don't. My crystal ball is very fuzzy tonight. What I do see in the proposed legislation is tension between the concept that this is medical marijuana, and the idea that even though it's medical marijuana, it has those recreational components. So the regulations being set forth don't treat it the same way other drugs are treated, and in some respects, treat it like a liquor, liquor license. and in some respects, treat it like a liquor license. So our hope in making this proposal is not to be foreclosed from whatever benefit the city could derive from it, should the city be allowed to own, operate, or lease a dispensary license.
Any other discussion, public board council on this first treaty? We did have first treaty last meeting, but because of significant changes, it is required to do first treaty again.
And we can raise the fee structure as is?
At least currently. Any other discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
I just have a quick comment in saying thank you to Daniel and Mark, the city staff in bringing this together. You know, sometimes it seems like it's just our best effort, given the fact that we have a requirement to have an ordinance in place prior to any regulations being sent out from the state, which, if you saw my head explode, it did, so, at the reasoning behind that, I'm just going to say that. So thank you so much for your hard work and effort in putting this together.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve.
The first by Dave, the second by Dean, and your last discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries unanimously. Brings us subset D under reports. This is another ordinance, first reading of it. This is a supplemental appropriation to make 2021's budget correct when it comes down to audit time at the end of the year, so. Mr. Ainsley, I'll turn it back over to you.
The item before you in your last item is a supplemental appropriation for the current year's budget. I know that the numbers are quite large, but I want to walk through the items with me to kind of see that it's not necessarily that there is a significant number of changes here. The vast majority of the changes in the supplemental appropriation is for TIPS, and to kind of explain that more, we'll go into each one in particular here. So TIP 16, which is the Trailhead Development, that was actually approved by council on September 21st of 2020. That was actually approved after the council had already adopted the 2021 budget. So that's why this was not included in the 2021 budget. During that time, when you were debating and forming and determining what the 2021 budget was, you were not aware if this project was going to proceed or not, and you definitely were not aware as to how much was going to be spent on infrastructure this year. As it turns out, that project was finally approved by the council. It went through a public hearing at the Plenary of Zoning Commission, which there was public input, and then it was debated by the city council and it was adopted. During that time, almost a million dollars was authorized to be spent on infrastructure for that project. That included making enhancements to Van Nuys Canyon Drive, which have been made, and also some improvements which will be made in the future, and then also in putting in new water lines and sewer lines, a new pavement on Trailhead Loop. Not all of those have yet been completed, but a large number of it have been. So with that being said, this is where it's difficult for us to know how much is actually going to be spent this year, and that the contractor is not actually the city's contractor. So this is our best estimate as to what's actually going to be spent by the developers' contractor this year. It might be more than what's spent, in which case it doesn't mean that money's going to be spent again. The total amount that can be spent on the TIP projects is already established and has already been approved by the council. So the $935,000 is all the money that can be spent on infrastructure, whether that's in year 2021, 2022, or 2023. The budget is simply saying that this is how much money is going to be spent this one calendar year. And so if we, if the council does approve 935,000, if 600,000 is finally spent by December 31st, it does not mean that $335,000 is going to be available, available to be spent in other areas. That $335,000 is going to end up being spent then in 2022. Does that make sense? The next supplement is TIP 17 for Smithy's, that's the Katy Lane Development. That was approved at the point that the council adopted the budget, but that was anticipated to take approximately a year and a half to be completed. Instead, they actually were able to complete it in less than nine months, and so TIP interest payments are starting to become due sooner than what we had anticipated. So that's an additional $6,000 that was not anticipated to be done in the 2021 budget. So that's why we're asking for you to supplement that project by $6,000. Again, that interest is already included in your project plan that was debated by the Plenary of Zoning Commission, recommended to the council to be approved, and the council subsequently did have approved that project plan.
It built out faster, so.
Yes, it built out faster, which is good news for everyone. TIP 20, which is Garden Grove, that, we again adopted that and approved it in December of 2021, so again, that was after you had actually approved the 2021 budget. At that time, we were not necessarily sure what was going to end up actually being done this year, and instead, what has happened is that all of the improvements essentially have almost been completed. It is anticipated that all of them will be completed this year. So we are anticipating just, or almost all of them, about $2,010,000 being spent this year on improvements. We do not know exactly all of that will be used, and this was a, tonight was a great example of that, that we received on Friday a pay request from the contractor and from the developer. We were not aware of how much that was going to be until that day, and we had to turn around and have that paid this week, which is why that was added to the claims. So it can make it a little confusing. If you look at your 22 budget, there was money in there for the Garden Grove development project. The infrastructure money that was in that 22 budget, if we actually spend it all this year, even though it's been budgeted in '22, we won't spend any of that, because that goes above and beyond the project plan, which that project plan is what you already approved and adopted. 2021 is Hidden Hills. Again, this is a project that's going to span at least two, if not three, years. A lot of the work has been done, some of the work is still going to be done next year. Even though that was approved by the council earlier in 2021, we did not know when the infrastructure was going to be able to be done. It was able to be done a little quicker than what we had anticipated, and so we have some additional costs. So again, it's not actually increasing the total cost of the project or the total cost of the budget, instead it's just saying that in 2021, we were able to get more of the project done than what we had anticipated. Going into the Bid Fund, that is our downtown business improvement district, we had some additional costs that were higher than what we had anticipated. One is we had a new Memorial Day event that was not originally budgeted for, and then also the Camaro Rally was hired. We had more attendees than what we had anticipated, and also some of the food costs were hired. And we also did some additional upgrades of part of the Davidson Rally Point sound system so that we can directly connect the laptop into the actual sound system. All of these extra expenses can be covered through the existing surpluses from the previous years in this budget, and so it's not coming from property taxes, it's not coming from sales tax or anything else, it's coming from the downtown bid funds and Camaro rally ticket sales. For the capital improvement fund, we are asking for a supplement of $22,000, but it's actually not $22,000 in cost higher than what we had budgeted. Instead, we had a couple smaller projects that ended up being slightly higher, and so we actually have to move some of your lump sum dollar amounts from a larger lump sum into those individual smaller projects. And so that's what's being done there. It's not $22,000 in additional funding, instead it's moving that away from a lump sum into particular projects that we're completing. Into the General Fund, the General Fund does have a lot of additional expenses in it, almost all of them we've already discussed in quite a bit of detail. The largest one was for ambulances that were purchased. We purchased one new ambulance and then also a remount of an existing ambulance. That was $243,000. If you remember, we've had a lot of previous council actions on this. One is that we actually authorized a purchase of it, another is that we transferred money from the General Fund into the ambulance fund, and so we took cash out of the General Fund and placed it into the ambulance fund. Even though we did that, we need to increase the General Fund's budget by that $243,000 that we spent on ambulances. So that's the first one, that's kind of the major portion of it. And then when we look at the airport, because of the increased activity that's occurring at the airport, Dave has been very successful there, we continue to sell more gas than we had already anticipated. And so we are looking to increase our budgeted authority in the airport by $50,000 to cover the extra fuel purchase. And again, to remember that that extra fuel purchase, we're actually making a net rocket on, so when we buy, or expend out an additional $50,000, we will have matching income that's going to exceed that $50,000 that will go into the General Fund. In addition, there was $9,000 in unforeseen repairs on sewer lines. And again, when it's unforeseen, really what that means is we tell all of our departments that when you develop your budget, you need to develop your budget based on a typical year. If there's something that's unforeseen, it can still be done and covered, but at that point, we're going to need a supplemental appropriation. The reason we don't say, give yourself an extra 10% or 15% cushion in case something goes wrong, is because we don't want to be what typical governments are, which means in November, departments start looking at that 10% to 15% cushion, if nothing wrong has happened, then they start going on a shopping list. Our departments have never done that, which is one of the main reasons why we have such a large balance in so many of our accounts. And so this is an example that the airport budget truly budgets for what it needs for the year, that there's unforeseen, like sewer lines that need to be replaced, we just ask for a supplement, and there's more than enough cash available to cover that supplement. And then in addition, there was a significant change to our relationship with SMRI and developing our own brand and strategy. That has been developed over several months, a discussion at the council level, and then also has been discussed in public, and the city used to be a licensee of SMRI, and that relationship was going to continue for another eight years, I believe, under the current contract, and so the city was able to negotiate a termination of that agreement, and then in doing so, the city ended our relationship entirely with SMRI, and also SMRI acknowledged the ability of the city to develop our own brand, which we did this year, and we sold that with sponsorship. And that came with costs to terminate our agreement with SMRI, and then also legal fees for filing our own trademarks, and also designing fees to establish our own trademarks. And so none of that was included in our 2021 budget, so that's why there's $472,000 for And then $182,000 to go in to pay for a lot of the extra costs that came with the open container, that was for actually purchasing the cups. As the cups had never been used before, there is a significant amount of concern from some in the community that a smaller number of cups, we would end up running out on Tuesday or Wednesday of the rally, we wanted to make sure that there was enough cups that would be made available, and so a lot of cups were purchased. The vast majority of those cups ended up just having the rally brand logo on so that they could be used for several years, and so in essence, prepayments have been made for those supplies, but we do need a supplemental appropriation to pay for that. And then also, when we developed our own license program, we have merchandise that is now currently being sold on our rally website. That merchandise, we of course have to purchase, and then that's sold, and then we have other merchandise that we actually have listed on our website right now, and as it's sold, we ship it out, and then we repay the individual, you know, local business that produces those. And so we do need an additional authority of $20,000 to pay for that product, but again, that is being offset by additional revenue that's coming in, in which case the city's also profiting from it, so there's more than $20,000 in increased revenue that's coming in to offset those costs. Then in addition, earlier this year, there was unseasonably cold temperatures that kind of came throughout a large portion of the United States, I forgot what that winter storm was called, but it, Irma?
Yuri.
Yuri, okay. One council member remembers in great detail. But because of that, the cost of purchasing electricity grew quite a bit higher, and so those costs have been transferred on to the customers of Black Hills Energy, and so all sorts of individual families have had to readjust their budgets to pay for those extra costs in the city, like anyone else has to readjust to meet those increased costs. We did account for those in our '22 budget, we did not, of course, in '21, because that hasn't happened for several years, and that's an atypical event. So that's an additional $40,000 in costs. In addition, we have a couple personnel changes. Our city attorney retired, and we have since hired on a new city attorney, and so we had some changes so that we could finish with a couple payments that were needed to our city attorney. And then also, we have a couple personnel changes that will be occurring in our library, we have some new interns that are coming on, and slightly different pay rates, different things like that, and so that is a change of $46,500. And then beyond that, there's $149,000 in additional just minor equipment or supplies, professional fees, and other things that were not anticipated when the 2021 budget was adopted. And so in total, if you look, other than those items that I've kind of gone over, which all of those items have been discussed by the council several times, and we're well aware, it comes down to about $149,000 in additional costs, which if you look at a $21 million budget, that's a fraction of a percentage. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Daniel. Good report, good information, as we try to remember all the things that happened and make our budget right, so. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
This report was excellent, Daniel. Outstanding.
All the questions, comments, concerns on this first treaty? The first by Mike to approve.
Second.
The second by Becca. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. Please note unanimous fave for a roll call on the ordinance. Brings us to item 12, other matters before the council, opportunity for non-agenda items to be discussed briefly. No action is allowed, but certainly for the No action is allowed, but certainly for the record. Public have anything to add tonight? Council have anything to add tonight?
Big changes.
Positive stuff, for sure. I believe there's no request for any additional executive session. Appreciate the public's patience and waiting as you come in, but it makes it a lot easier and more efficient for us to be here beforehand, so. Is there a motion to adjourn? First by Becca. Or a second by Dean. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no, or adjourn?